Judith, did you notice something that moved on this paper?
Uh, can't say anything, I was just there.
So the stone town roof wasn't replaced, the stone town roof wasn't supposed to be to maintain the historic designation. They replaced it with asphalt because Bill's criteria is it was cheaper.
This looks totally different than it did when we were in my office and there's no options. No options. I am recording. Remember how we went and like X those things out? They're not here.
Um.
We're gonna go with it. I'm recording. There is none. Ah, that one, okay. Hi, how are you? Okay, smarty pants. Thank you.
Well, that looks like one.
It's in, it's recording. So just so you guys know, Zoom is on, it's recording, but it's only for viewing purposes only. We just set this up this afternoon, a couple hours before you got here.
Okay, it is six o'clock. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for September 19th, 2024. We'll have a forum. So, under Communications, oh, first of all, the minutes. We have the minutes from September 5th. If everybody's okay with them, I'd like to stop them as is. On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright. Okay, under Communications and Announcements, we have an email from C Keys and Residential Neighbors regarding the Station Bar. We have an email from Sadwick regarding 11105 Route 28. So, under New Business, we have Scheduled Business, we have two, I believe, yes. So, the first one is 605, we've got a minute, but you can come on up. This is a the public hearing for Teta and Basson for SUP number 24-0699. This is the public hearing for a special use permit application for a short-term rental of a three-bedroom owner-occupied dwelling in the R3 zoning district located at 52 Raybrook Drive in Woodstock. So I'd like to entertain a motion to open a public hearing. Second. On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience for this case? Okay, so would you please explain to the public what you're requesting to do?
Uh, the home is an owner-occupied home and they're seeking a short permit for short-term rentals when they're not there under, I believe it's, what is it, 180 days a year, maybe even less than that. I'm the property manager, Robin Hollins, and I make sure that there's no noise and no problems and no trash all over the street so that when the owners are away, there's somebody paying attention.
Okay, any comments from the public, any questions?
Yeah, so I guess my first question is, are you applying owner-occupied or not owner-occupied?
Well, they don't, they live in the house, you know, except for the residents.
So they're there certainly over that year, okay. And they're just renting out like a
Yeah, they're, it's a, it's a
Or is it like it's detached ABU or is it detached?
No, it's the home.
Okay, so within the home, like a bedroom?
No, it's a three-bedroom house, whole house, we think that.
So they rent the whole house and vacate it while they're renting it?
Well, uh, they have a, they have an apartment in the city. Mostly the wife, Mike, she works up here and they have two children. But the husband works in the city and so sometimes they be down there in the city.
This is, this is, okay. And you've asked me to hear your question.
Well, I have more experience with short-term rentals.
Yeah.
For that.
You're the one.
Yes, I had a photo of Robin in the meeting. Uh, yeah, Robin helped us when, in 2025, I was with I had her in March, so she was a lot of money. We haven't actually rented this house since we bought it, like, Pope by then. Our experience with Robin and G Bennett wasn't too perfect, so we asked her. Like, they are not there in our absence, she could manage the public, give them what she's looking for, give them a problem.
So I guess I'm kind of curious if they're owner-occupied or they're most of the time, it's not a non-owner-occupied, but you're managing it because they're not there.
When they aren't there. For example, they might be there for six months in a row and then maybe they'll be gone for two or three weeks.
Right.
And then without other thoughts.
Let's say if the someone we are visiting, I don't think that's normally a thing for like the one not just here, they just don't, they need someone who can manage anything that comes up during the time because we really want people.
Um, other thing is, we have a bare task force, we have a crisis, we're there. I see people that do this and they're not there and then it's on the road. How, what specifically
So we have a, we have a bare trash can in our house and stuff. For, I mean, so it's, we never had issues because of that, like a bare trash can. I think everyone in the top of the deal is like, you want a novel and you don't have to worry about it ever. But, so we've never had, like in my house, anything switch because of the fact that the trash can.
I'm sorry, could you give your name to?
Um, I'm Renee Nutz. It's Renee's.
Anybody else in the public for this case? Were there any phone calls?
There was not a one.
Well, then I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Who can close the public hearing?
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Um. Application for?
Yeah, the, um So we're gonna make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution.
Application pending draft resolution.
Second. On favor?
Hi.
They are abstaining. Next?
Next.
Thank you. I'll email you guys the resolution.
Thank you, buddy.
Have a nice night.
Okay. One minute. That's okay. Uh, the next case is a public hearing and it's Badges for World Peace LLC. Um, and it's a site plan review application to modify existing site for Station Bar Imperial, accommodate outdoor seating and designate additional parking in conjunction with covered platform for live music in the Hamlet Commercial and Hamlet Preservation Overlay Zoning District located 97 and 101 Tinker Street in Woodstock. The ref is Lily. Uh, so I'm gonna make a motion to open a public hearing.
I do have a concern. It should not say for live music.
In your resolution, it does not say that. This is how it came to us. This is how it was put in the refer, in the in the referral from the building department. So, in the resolution, it does not say that, as you guys know and most of you have read. Yes, that's, yep, but as it goes through the process, we take what comes from the building department and the referral and that's the case work which we've adjusted already because it was something else before too. And this one was tough because it was already, the site plan for the majority of what they're requesting was already approved.
Fantastic.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, um, is there anybody in the audience for this case? Okay, um, again, alright, you can go first and
I think it lasts.
Please state your name so that you can go ahead.
Oh, I want to hear what you have to say.
He's asking for public comment. If you'd like to speak, you can speak, you should have to tell me your name.
I'm Bisa.
Fanny?
Bisa. B R I C A N D.
Okay. Speak.
Oh, I feel that, you know, it's a very good venue. And, uh, it's, uh, it's the with, uh, we want you to, okay, it was a very good venue for the
Thank you. Serena?
Um, Serena, I'm, I'm a resident here, grew up here, um, so the trash, the dash, it came back and, um, one of the main things that I feel, and I've worked on, um, the key musical I outside, um, and helped with that petitioning, which we got over 900 residents to sign, um, petition specifically based on the comp plan to encourage the arts in the community and to change the zoning to, um, for the first time in our history, right in the zone, some, um, amplified music. And that should apply to all venues, all these venues, and well, that's applying to all that one. But I know that this is something that's just about opening, like, this specifically is for them to just get legit, um, the 2020, um, COVID, what was allowed to have more space and now just trying to so I just think that it's important to get rid of venues because this also represents, um, the, the people that aren't made included in our community very much.
Thank you. Were there any phone calls or written comments?
Just the only one is the, the message from Claire and the residential members that you, most of you have read and was aware of. So yes, no, no other calls besides what you got.
Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Ayes?
Alright, alright. Okay, so, um, Grayden, I know, went to the site. We've all seen the site plan, um, and you physically went there. Is everything look good?
Engaged.
Yes, everything's great.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the heart was, you know, what she had laid out on her blueprint of it and all that. Yeah, the amount of spaces that's needed for residential authoritatives.
Board members have any comments or?
We said for the, for the public, that when it's under our perfectly full parking, uh, it's not our area of concern.
And I guess if you already in the resolution, it clearly states that they have to obey by all town codes and town rules or whatever the town comes up with. It's not, you know, that's our resolution says that. Is there anything else board members want to add to this case or?
No.
Um, okay, like
Sure, you're gonna proof the application?
Uh, let's move that, uh, let's move the proof the application, let me derive a provision.
Perfect. Second?
Second.
Favor?
Hi.
Okay, so, thank you.
We'll have to figure out parking, but you knew, you knew that, so, all good, it's on there.
Hi, Judy, you're on a roll, you've got some more, uh, resolution.
And that's all LLC, that's PR 24, 45, 6A.
Second?
Those are the ones we already
They're just tonight's public hearing, second?
Second.
Ayes?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright. Then the next one is the Wetland and Watercourse from last week, last meeting.
The CHU Trust, Wetlands and Watercourse, 24-057, motion to approve the draft of motion.
Sorry.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Can I do one more while you're at it?
Motion to return $3,500.
I took, I took a write-out too, it looks great.
Okay, so our last, uh, item is a recap of the gateway meeting. I know Judy went and Grayden went, I believe.
Yep.
Um, I did see what you all wrote on the email, thought it was pretty conclusive, went over everything. Of course, we know that secret is not an option, therefore we can't pause that it, and we're down to traffic safety rules.
That's what seems to come with it.
So, what's their next schedule?
So, okay. They, they're pushing for, as you know, do you want to go before I go? Are you sure? As we know, they're pushing for, as the last meeting, public hearing, um, send to Ulster County Planning Board and secret determination. We have not officially done the secret determination yet. I, I pushed to them that after this meeting, I'm going to suggest that you, the board, make a, make a motion to send to Ulster County Planning Board. Let's send the, send their plans to the Ulster County Planning Board. It's fresh in Ulster County Planning Board's mind right now because they had the gateway meeting, so I kind of think it's an ideal time to get their comments. And then I think with their comments, then you guys can go do the site visit. So my chronal of this right now is, you make the motion tonight for me to work on the referral to Ulster County Planning Board. I will work on that in the next few weeks, get that to them, get a response from them and set the site.
Okay, you know, our, our attorney reviewed it and said secret was not an option, we're pushed, but, um, we have your basic, uh
Absolutely.
Um, environmental report.
Absolutely, no, I agree, but does that make sense for a lot, like, so then I say after we get done with Ulster County Planning Board and have their response, we all go do this site visit, we bring them back, we talk, and then at that point we schedule a public hearing because I think that's just the chronal of it and what I've kind of said to them. So if that makes sense to you, I think that's where we're at. Yes, we've been in the loop with our attorney. Matt Rudy called me today, he had things going on, didn't make the gateway meeting, I think he was a little surprised that I said remember for the Ulster County Planning Board, but you guys know, we're here, like, just we wait, we have to
So I think our, our, our main, uh, our main person that, on our side here is the traffic consultant.
Sure.
And it's what he said that is what we're gonna have to kind of hold.
You know what I think would be a great idea? If we get John Lyons, but if we get Stephen Mafia to go on the site. Seriously, let's do Ulster, I want, again, I want to make a motion, so it's in the record, it's, we made a motion, we're gonna skip referral from Ulster County Planning Board, you know, like, we've done everything. And then I think, yeah, I think we get Stephen Mafia to come with us for the site visit.
One of his main points, which
Right?
has never been thoroughly discussed, I think, is, he said the traffic code um, suggests that there not be any entrance and exit within 100 feet of the traffic, and this clearly is within 100 feet of the traffic.
And I also think Don Lyons and Kim has been great and we're just gonna keep them right here as we keep going and probably have them write this resolution.
One of the things that came up in the gateway meeting was the question of whether the way that the building is sized can be shifted back toward the property line, which might be a variance so that there's more room for the driveway. And that's also a question about that
Septic.
The subject, that's a subject backup, it's not actually the main one.
No.
They're not gonna waste any more time.
It's both, it's both, they said it's both.
They're not gonna waste any more time and do that and spend more money because they're here. I'm just but
If the biggest issue is the distance from the intersection
Oh, yeah.
And their property allows with rearrangement
Might be
better exit site, I think that's reasonable for us. That they don't like rearranging, that they don't like
And this, this is why I love that, like, we have John, like, you guys, we, John Lyons is, is our man at this point.
I mean, especially given the fact that it is very clear that the speed limit is not too far. And it is very clear, and I made this point, that when you make that left turn out of Zena Road, it's not, not even a turn, it's a sharper turn than that. People tend to go into the bright lane because of the direction they should not. It's an easier turn to make and it's also a bust. So it really backgrounds for being tight on that 112, it seems to be.
And remember too, like, we can hold a public hearing and continue, but we are a very efficient board. You know, we tend to do a public hearing, we tend to be we've met what we've required, you know, we, so we're going through all the avenues and we're sticking to the process and that's what I keep telling their team and their lawyers and that's basically what it is for you, so motion, do I hear a motion from you guys? Thank you.
We refer.
Second.
One? Hi.
Hi.
Perfect. We have a plan in it.
The, I mean, we still have to do the environmental review. And in that, we can bring up safety.
Absolutely. Well, maybe, you know what, maybe what we'll do is we'll get folks, everything we'll make, I'll take anything or tear apart on the EAF. Like, you know, I've done that before, others, we could do that too.
Does WEC get involved in the environmental review?
Yes, but right now there is
There is no WEC.
There's one person, right?
So
They were very involved.
Table, the whole
Which second round of voting is no more?
They, everyone quits or gets fired. There's a lot of tension.
Can I ask why?
I'm I just know I got annoyed, Alex.
Yeah, it would go back to that.
It was never really said. People who are on the way who are not definitely going that way.
Sorry.
They dismissed their chair for dubious reasons. Uh, going to candidate.
Well, we kind of did something else as me. Right now, I'm still standing, walking in the building, replacing the roof on this with an asphalt roof.
But that's architectural, that's not
No, no, I understand that.
They did?
Okay, I
Wait, 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 you can't dismiss it because it's architectural.
Right.
It's a violation of the fact that this is a historically designated
It's a civic science, it's an issue for civic design, it's not environmental, it's
It's civic design in the handle.
Uh, at this point, I do not care, I do not care who was not watching the store. Somebody obviously is not watching the store. We have a sound supervisor who historically ignores these things. If this costs three cents less than this, we go with three cents less. We don't go with the fact that this is historically designated property. And you can't take the roof off this building and replace it with an asphalt roof. You just can't do that.
I agree with you.
So getting back to the question, uh, whether WEC has an overlay in the 28 case.
Understand.
Do they? Is it an environmental question or is it a traffic and safety question?
Well, one of the things that when we do the environmental review, one of the questions is, will it cause traffic, more traffic?
So in that sense, it's environmental.
Right, this is all leading up to the document that, that you're, you were gonna create with people, yes. Okay, I'm moving on to bigger and better things. Uh, October 17th, which is not the next meeting, the next meeting is the 3rd of the 17th, I'm canceling, I'm going to see my sister in South Carolina. So mark your calendars. Um, also, I went to the New York Planning Federation workshop two weeks ago over in Hyde Park, it was great. Of course, I'll use it for upcoming workshops. I put in a request for two others, but don't always get responses, so who knows what'll happen when those are around the corner and prices are gonna go up, but I put in four. Um, the annual watershed conference is drinking water source attack, which we know we deal with people coming in complaining about water all the time and how is the subdivision gonna affect me and if you do this, so I was like, oh, this is great. And then I put in four, and they're very cheap. This one is 75 and I think the other one is 50. I'll pay for it out of my own pocket to go. Um, how do we practice to address the climate crisis? Because we talk about this all the time and, you know me, I'm all about education and community, so, just so you know. Of course, I will.
Starting the film test.
Mr. LeVey.
Excuse me, dog with bone refuses to let go of the bone. I would like this board to make a resolution, pass a resolution, bringing to the attention that the town board or whoever chose to replace the roof on this building has violated the, the law, basically. And no one's saying anything. So, at least the planning board could say to them, hey, you just really blew it. That's not your decision. Excuse me, what?
I could think of how to tactfully do this.
What is that, do you tactful?
Okay, it doesn't have
Well, I don't know anything about what happened, so I don't know anything about like
I was on the CCD and it, yeah.
I haven't seen any plans, I haven't seen anyone that was approved, that, you know, I just can't vote for something that's like
Do one of you want to draft a letter and I will, and we can all sign, how about that? How about one of you draft a letter?
Story building?
Right.
And then we will sign it?
Were there plans that were approved that said asphalt on it and
They're sitting over there.
That's what I don't know, it's like I wasn't there.
Okay, here's my suggestion, here's your admin. One of you, Judy probably wordsmith, draft a letter and from the planning board and then we have everybody okay?
I could just ask the question, like, was, where was this ever, you know, put on the plans, when was this ever, who approved it, you know, this?
But I don't think a resolution is the way to go about it.
No, I don't, I don't, I think there should be an initial just question.
Yes, I think there needs to be just communications to the town board and supervisor McKenna like we do with everything else.
So it's replaced already?
It wasn't last week, you saw it.
Was it replaced already?
It's halfway done.
It was slate, buddy.
It was all slate. The slate's been removed and they're putting up asphalt.
I don't even understand, so is there possibly gonna be slate put on top of the asphalt? Is, I mean
No, no.
I don't know.
No, no.
This is a direct way to do that kind of
Okay.
How do you stop it right now?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm not sure what the building company is on that either, so I guess you could put slate in yourself.
New, new slate look fiberglass.
Slate look?
I'm sorry. What was that?
The plant.
New slate look fiberglass.
Was it fiberglass that's going up on?
Slate look? Go out and look at it.
It's ambiguous, yeah. They, they, um, they said, they didn't allow the CCD to, um, work on this project.
Well, everybody should go and click their heel for the supervisor. Snappy Hile. He's, he's absolutely going around every board in this town. He's been doing it for years and it's just really outrageous, but
He didn't, he didn't run a pre-additional by him.
I know that.
Of course, the town board has the right to bypass the planning board and any other board, their decisions for any
And has the right is correct. Is it morally imperative that they consult with these boards? The boards are here for a reason. I mean, I sat in that supervisor's chair for four terms, I know exactly what comes out.
This is funny, is the town board focused or is it something that's
My guess would be there was never a hold on this.
That would be my guess.
Never.
No, we brought it up.
It's the way McKenna likes to write. It's the way McKenna likes to write. Right, exactly.
Because the whole point of this edition was to maintain this building in its original shape.
Precisely.
Well, more to the point, if it is a historically designated building, there are rules about what you cannot do. And it should be run by ship of at least.
I think there should be a resolution from the planning board to the town board if the rest of the board agrees. Specifically asking what process they went through, did they indeed clear it with people like ship of? Did they, what did they do in order to take a historically significant building in this town? And change the roof?
Would all that just be a letter or is that a resolution?
I think it needs to be a letter.
I think it should start as a letter and then if we have snow wall, then it can be something more like, you know.
Uh, because a letter, every piece of communication we receive goes logged in. I can tell you from the meeting of eighty four, what letter came in from, I mean, that's how we operate, I know all boards don't operate like that, but that's how it's supposed to be. A letter should be acknowledged at a town board meeting.
Right.
I would assume, see, a resolution is more our business. That's why I wanna kind of steer clear from a resolution, I would rather it be a letter.
Fine, but it's just.
I know, I know. But I think duties are words.
Depends on how it's written, I mean, if it's, if it's a letter asking questions, I'd not, I'd know if you're asking.
Put this one on you.
But you can't wait for next planning board meeting. Cause they're.
We can, we can work on it.
And I can call you and email you when it come and tell you so you know that we'll get your email and read it. We can, we can, you know, I can keep up communication. Yes. I'm out of the office Wednesday and Thursday too, I'm going to turn into someone to go play some bingo gambling. Um, yes.
Win money.
I hope so, probably lose money, it'll be tough. So.
Okay.
Good?
Ready for an adjournment?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
So that's all this stuff. This is all this meeting stuff.